We might have that.
She is.
There she is, okay. Uh, starting our recording, starting our broadcast, um, and I will take a look at our headings as we go. The front of your chair.
Okay, um, welcome to the planning board meeting for February 7th, 2024. I'll begin with a roll call. Alden Clark?
Here.
Beth Delisle?
Here.
Bob Cope?
Here.
Jamie Pennington?
Here.
Heather Rogers?
Yeah.
McTainer is here, and absent are Charlie Palmasano and associate members Jen Bluestein and Brian Balcom. Uh, are you able to hear me okay through this?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so tonight we have on our agenda one public hearing, um, for Four Otis Place, and we have under general business, a request for extension. This is just a report from the planning director, approval of minutes, and discussion of various zoning issues. So we will begin with the public hearing. Um, Douglas DeShane, Four Otis Place, a special permit for nonconformities, and a DOD special permit.
Andrew, can I, uh, Andrew, can I pass, can you pass those?
Will do.
Yeah. Appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. Uh, for the record, Douglas DeShane from, uh, Finnerland Nicholson here, representing the NIMBYers, uh, with respect to their property at Four Otis Place. Um, I, I do have a PowerPoint up here, but I gave you a copy as well, because sometimes it's hard to see the details of the plans, um, you know, from the screen. So I also gave you two, uh, enlarged plans that I need to point out a very small detail on. So I gave you a blow up so you'd be able to see that. And lastly, I've provided you a copy of the, um, the letters of support that we've received from our neighbors. So, um, that's the package that you have there. So if I could, I'll, uh, I'll, I'll follow along the, uh, the PowerPoint if we could. So again, uh, Douglas DeShane with Finnerland Nicholson here, representing, uh, Stephen and Sharon Nipmar, who are here with us this evening. Uh, also with us this evening is Eileen Graff from Graff Architects, who did the architectural work on the project. Um, as a quick, uh, project summary?
Good, thank you.
Sorry, uh, for precision, you can say next, I'll, well, great, thank you. Um, the NIMBYers would like to build a, uh, first floor and second floor addition to their current property, uh, and replace some of the windows in the existing structure. Um, as determined by the zoning enforcement officer, the planned renovations would require, um, uh, two special permits from the planning board, uh, one for nonconformities, the other because we are in the downtown Overlake District. Um, and then as part of that, you know, we needed to go to the historic, uh, commission for a, um, advisory review, and we have completed that, and I'm sure you know that you've received their, uh, recommendations in the package. Next, please. Um, the existing structure is approximately 1,288 square feet in size. It's two-story, single-family home located in the business two zoning district, the B2, as well as in the downtown Overlake District. Uh, the existing home and the lot are pre-existing non-conforming, uh, in a couple of manners. Uh, the lot is, uh, relatively small, it's 1,616 feet, square feet, uh, when 10,000 is required in the applicable zone. Uh, the front, lot frontage is 42 feet where 90 feet is required. With respect to the dwelling, the front setback is currently, uh, 1.5 feet, uh, where 20 feet is required. The side setbacks, right is at 0.4, and the left is at 9.8, again, where 20 feet is required. Rear setback is at 9.9, and the maximum lot coverage is currently at 46.8%, whereas 40% is allowed in the zone. So we do have pre-existing nonconformities as to the lot, as well as the structure itself. Next, please. Um, the zoning impacts of the proposed use, these proposed, uh, additions are, um, that it will change the pre-existing non-conforming setback by two feet, uh, therefore, uh, reducing the setback from its current 9.9 to 7.9. Uh, the proposed addition also changes the maximum lot coverage, I'm sorry, obviously it was a typo, from the existing 46.8% to the proposed 48.8% that I mentioned earlier. Uh, the proposed addition is actually quite modest in size. It will only provide an additional 161 square feet of living space while increasing, increasing the footprint of the building by less than 33 square feet in total. Um, ironically, because the lot is so small, that a, a small increase in the footprint of only 33 square feet actually bumps our lot coverage, uh, by 2.2%. So as you know, it's all a ratio, but, uh, this addition is, is quite modest. Next, please. So, um, we went to the historical, uh, commission and provided them a, a presentation. Uh, there was some amazing historical information available on this property, um, and we went through that with the, with the historic commission, but in light of the fact that the board is making the decision, I wanted to just give you a quick overview. Um, Otis Place was laid, the road was laid out back in 1880. Uh, homes along Otis Place were developed over the next 30 years to fulfill the need for middle-class housing near Newburyport Center Business District, and most of them were inhabited by the clerks and managers of the businesses down in Market Square. Um, in 1884, Harriet J. Swapp purchased a lot of land at the corner of Garden Street, Otis Place, which was, at that point, that area was known as Banister Field. Um, she paid a whopping $950 back in 1884. Um, on that land, she built two houses, including the house at Four Otis, uh, with an architectural style known as Vernacular Victoria. However, um, Harriet never lived in the property, and, uh, she rented them, uh, and they were later sold in 1893 to the Little family. Uh, in 1909, the Little sold the house at Four Otis to, uh, Bessie Moulton. Uh, Bessie was the wife of George Moulton. He was a manager of a boot and shoe store, uh, on State Street. So in keeping with the housing for merchants, uh, uh, the Moultons lived there. Uh, they were actually the first family to ever both own it and live there, uh, which is interesting. In 1919, the Moultons sold the home to, uh, a Clancy family, uh, and that family controlled the house, uh, for, um, uh, till 1964, so they were there the longest of anyone. Uh, but then the house changed hands a number of times until it was purchased by, uh, my clients in 2021. So very interesting history. Um, next, please, in. So here's some pictures, uh, just to give you an overview of the home. This is a picture, the front of the house here on the, uh, on the left side, um, as seen from Otis Street. Um, and, uh, to the right picture, what you're looking at is, uh, unfortunately, my client's view of the right side of their home, uh, is the location where the, um, uh, Institute for Savings is about to build a, a very large parking garage structure. Uh, next slide, please. Again, this is, uh, lower views to the right side of the home, and as you can see, uh, the forms and foundation for that garage are approximately, uh, seven or eight feet off the, of the side of the home. Uh, and then the picture on the right is really just standing on Otis, looking to the right of the home. Next slide, please. Thank you. Uh, these pictures depict the left side of the home, and as you can see, um, in that first picture, that is actually the front door to the home. It does not face Otis, but rather it is on the, uh, left side of the home, uh, so you can see a close-up there, and then to the right is the picture, you know, standing at the street, looking at the left. Next slide, please. Uh, and this picture is again, looking at the left from the neighbor's driveway, so you can see that there are a lot of windows on either ends of the home. Uh, and then la, on the right here is, uh, I apologize, but it was the only picture I could get of the rear of the home, because with the yard being so short, I couldn't get the camera to get a picture, so I stuck into the backyard of the neighbor, and, uh, they were kind enough to let me snap a shot. But that's the, uh, rear of the home as it exists today. Uh, I believe there's one more picture. Oh, no, great. So here, uh, we could now get to the, uh, site plans, and again, this is why I gave you some copies, so that you can maybe see better. Uh, but as, as, as you can see, this, this picture depicts the, um, the house as it sits on the, uh, lot today. Uh, the brown shaded area constitutes the, uh, proposed additions. Um, the longer, um, vertical, uh, uh, brown section, uh, that shows the addition, that actually sits on top of an, an existing, uh, first floor, whereas the, um, if you look to the left, this little square that's in brown, that's the proposed one-story addition. So there's two parts to it. Uh, to the left is a one-story addition, you'll be able to see it much better in the elevations, and to the, uh, right side is that, that longer section actually sits above an existing, um, first floor thing. So that's why I said we're, we're doing a, a one-story addition and then a addition to a, to the, to a existing one-story. And then, of course, you can see the stairs are going off in the back. Um, there's currently a very wide stairway and porch, uh, we're reducing that to narrow the stairs. Um, next slide, please. Okay, so these are existing and proposed elevations. Um, on the left, you can see the front of the home, um, and quite honestly, there is no change, or you will not be able to see anything associated with the, uh, proposed additions from the front of the home. Um, and then on the, uh, left side, uh, of the, excuse me, on the right side, uh, shows the left side of the home. You can see in the top picture, the existing, uh, front door, as I refer to it. Uh, and then, uh, you can also see on that picture that the existing, um, addition or addition bump out on the, on the, on the back of the home. And then if you look below, that is the proposed structure, and as you can see, we've added an, an addition, uh, with a roof line, uh, above that existing structure, and then the part you can see there with the window, and I'm sorry, but I, unfortunately, my, my, uh, laser pointer, uh, is not working. Um, you can see where that new window is to the left of the door, that's the one-story addition they're proposing. Everything being proposed is off the back of the home. Next slide, please. Uh, this, uh, th, th, this plan, uh, and, and now I can, I need to kind of step away. Um, since we went to the historic commission and received their recommendation, uh, my clients and architect, uh, thought that it would be a benefit to the project and certainly, um, a, a help to the, uh, to my clients to add a small little, uh, roof over that, the new back door. Um, so if you, um, there's, again, there's nothing you can see on the, uh, the front picture existing, um, and again, to the left, you can see the little roof over the, you know, again, the main entrance. But if you look to the pictures to the right, um, and you look down below at the proposed addition, right there, that little roof, uh, and it's what, two feet, uh, it's only two feet out, so it doesn't constitute block coverage or far or anything. Um, it's just a small little roof over that rear, um, over that rear door, and if you look at the front door, the main door, it, 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 it's the same, it's the same overhang. See, there's that little triangle overhang over the front door. We are just proposing to put one of those over the back door. It will match the architecture of the home and it will provide a little shelter from the rain if you're coming out the back door, so. And if you go to the next plan, um, in fact, why don't we just skip down to the, this, the next one? So, and again, I. So this is, the upper picture on the left is the existing structure as it is today. Uh, you can see there's some dormers there, there's a, a, a sliding glass door with a wide stairway coming off that back addition, and, uh, and then to the right of that, there's currently nothing there. And if you look below, that is the proposed addition. Uh, we were, are eliminating the, the dormers, which the historic commission felt were awkward, and many of them felt it was beneficial to remove them. Um, and as you can see, uh, we have the, the second story being added, and then over to the right of that picture on the bottom left, you see the, the window, the larger window, that's the little one-story addition. And if you look at the new back door and look above it, you can see the little roof that we're now proposing to, to add there, that two, two-foot roof to, um, you know, just provide some rain protection, and again, it matches the little protection over the front door, the main entrance, I should say. Um, if we could go to the, um, next slide, please. Uh, these are the floor plans. Um, you'll, you'll see that, uh, in the middle plan, um, you will see that, um, that little infill one-story addition we're adding to the back, uh, is going to be a small office area. Um, and adjacent to that will be a, um, a half bath. Uh, and then, um, if you go over to the next picture, um, which is the second story, you can see that this is, and, and I should, um, you can see that what it'll allow us to do is to add, um, a little more, uh, area to the master ba, bedroom and a walking closet, which is the, you know, the second story addition that we're adding over what's there today. So the first floor, the one-story addition will be a small office, and, uh, and then the second story will add a little bit of room to the bedroom and, uh, a closet. So the la, the next picture, the next slide, is actually a rendering of the home, and as you can see, um, to the rear, that's our addition. Um, that's, that's the entirety of what it'll look like. Um, quite frankly, this is about the only view that you'll be able to see it, because if you go to the left side, you know, there's a home and driveways and everything else, and I suppose if you're way down Otis, you might be able to get the angle, but really, as the historic commission determined, that, really, it's not going to be visible to, uh, anyone, uh, other than the, you know, um, if you're in the backyard. And in fact, once the ha, parking garage is placed there, um, there may not even be a view of this at all, uh, unfortunately. Um, in summary, and I appreciate your time in listening to me, um, there's no question that this home qualifies as a historical structure under the zoning ordinance, and that it is historically significant. We, we, we knew that, and historic commission agreed. Uh, however, uh, the NIMBYers truly value their historic home and its significance in the history of Newburyport, and have been outstanding stewards of the home. Uh, they've preserved and maintained its historical character and architecture, and in fact, they went about on their own and replaced all of the sidewalks, the driveway, and the rear patio, which was asphalt and, 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 uh, blocks, and they actually, uh, redid it, uh, by, uh, installing historically correct bricks, or, you know, bricks of, uh, emulated the era. So the sidewalks, the driveway, and their patio is now all in keeping with the historic nature. They also, uh, reached out to the Historic Preservation Trust, uh, when they took control of the home in an effort to document the history of their home and to archive it with the trust, and also to, uh, qualify the display of historic home plaque, uh, on the house. Uh, you know, they, they did that of their own accord. As the first to do so, um, they hope that this would encourage more homeowners along Otis Place to embrace their historic nature and, and, and get their, their properties, uh, registered in this manner. Uh, however, I mean, it was very costly. Uh, they had to pay for both the historic research that was done, uh, by the trust, as well as the plaque and, and, and whatnot. So it was important to them to understand the history of their home and to, to maintain it. However, in order to make the home just a little more accommodating for the living, modern living needs, they are proposing a very modest addition. And, and lastly, if we could go to the last sign, as I said originally, the proposed additions are very modest. They're located through the rear of the home, and will not be readily visible from the street, nor will the addition result in an increase in the height of the structure. The proposed additions, including the materials and architectural style, are in keeping with the materials and architectural styling of the existing home, the neighborhood, and the DOD, and this was certified by, or agreed to with the, by the historic commission. As required under the DOD, the proposed alterations will not disrupt the essential form and integrity of the home or its exterior architectural features, nor will it disrupt the lot or its setting within the DOD. The proposed alterations will be compatible with the size, scale, height, color, material, and character of the home, the lot, and within its setting, just dead-on, uh, compatible. Um, and lastly, I, I'd like to point out that, uh, my clients have, um, the support of many of their neighbors, and what I gave you a copy of is the, uh, NIMBYers actually reached out to all of the adjacent neighbors, uh, with the exception of the Institute for Savings. Um, um, and they provided an overview of the project to all of their neighbors, um, and with, uh, the exception of one neighbor who's a, uh, owns the property but is a landlord, they're not in this area, um, they did not respond to two requests, but all of the other neighbors did, and they've provided us with either letters or emails, uh, expressing their support and appreciation, uh, for what the NIMBYers have done with the home and, you know, in keeping it, uh, the way it needs to be. So, um, it's a very supportive neighborhood for this project. Uh, it's certainly not going to have adverse impact on anyone, very modest in size, but, um, it will allow a little more breathing room for the, uh, for my clients. So with that, and again, I will point out that the only thing different in this presentation from what the historic commission reviewed is that proposed rear, um, you know, small roof over the rear door. And if you've looked at the historic commission's, um, recommendations, they point out the fact that everything we're doing is in the back, and that it's not going to be seen by anyone, it's, you know, historically correct, it matches, um, and so I don't think they would have a concern with this, especially where we are emulating the, the cover that's over the, the main entrance today, and it will be in the back, and, uh, it's really just a very small, um, consideration. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, and I, I thank you for your consideration of this, of these permits.
Thank you. Um, do, do any board members have any questions for the applicant?
Just, just to confirm, you are replacing, uh, several of the windows?
Yes, um, the windows, um, the windows that we're replacing, were, I think, were replaced in the, uh, seventies or eighties, and they're not, uh, they're not in, you know, they're not in keeping with anything. The windows that we're going to put in will, uh, you know, at least have the same design and shape as the, uh, what we believe were the original. And the historic commission was in agreement with that.
Yes, yeah, and those are the ones in the front that, that you show in the diagram, uh, that are going to over to.
Again, uh, the NIMBYers are, are really, you know, great stewards of this home, and they want to bring it back to, you know, its original glory.
Hey, any other questions? If not, uh, we can open up the public, um, comment for the public hearing. I can't see who's in the room, so I'll leave it up to the planning director.
Uh, do we have anybody in the room? Okay. Uh, and Chair, nobody in the room, and, uh, we have no remote attendees this evening, at least at present.
Okay, uh, we will close the public hearing and open it up for discussion and a, uh, a motion. Um, Andy, one thing I didn't see, uh, I'm not sure whether this, whether this is, uh, necessary or not, often we have, uh, with a special permit, we often have, have conditions of approval. I see the findings in there, but I didn't see any conditions. So do we need those for these two special permits?
Uh, thank you, uh, yes, I, uh, I guess my recommendation there is just that the board included standard conditions as per usual. Um, I guess the only question would be, are there any special conditions that you would recommend, but I would recommend the, the standard special, the standard conditions we put on our permits, uh, in special purpose. Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, so any discussion from the board, uh, and, uh, i, if there is no discussion, I could go straight to a motion.
No discussion? I'll make a motion to approve both special permits with the standard conditions.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, um, because we have members, um, first of all, is there any discussion on the motion? And hearing none, uh, because we have remote members, we need to do a roll call, so I'll start the roll call on this motion. Um, Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Bob?
Yeah.
Jamie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so we have unanimous vote in favor of granting those special permits. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much for your time and consideration. Hope you have a nice night.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to the general business, and the first item is the request for extension for 166 to 168 Route 1, uh, the Minko Project. Andy?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Uh, a little bit of confusion, apologies, there, uh, we actually had this on the agenda, although I think it's actually worthwhile in a way, because I get the, uh, the place you about the timing of this project. Um, as, as some of the board members may know, when we're longer, we've, we've transitioned with some, uh, the format of conditions and permits, so there's been an evolution over time, we're dealing with small-scale modifications of permits, or even sometimes timeframe extensions here, um, are things that can be done at a staff level, that's something that the board has decided, you know, in some cases, venusia, so to speak, and, you know, that the board doesn't necessarily need to be bothered with certain things, so there are certain cases where you've, uh, put that latitude in decisions, um, and obviously there are some situations where things are just sent right back to the board, they're just too, uh, something of the nature, uh, to fit in that category. Uh, but here it was, it was not picked up immediately, um, Jennifer, our zoning advisor, Caitlin, our, sorry, better. We typically look through our decisions, because of course, over, over time, they're not all the same language and, and, and provisions for that, because it's been an evolution, so, uh, it wasn't picked up here that that, uh, that the timeframe extension, the planning board has specifically and explicitly put the decision that the, uh, planning board director could, uh, planning director could extend the permit. So, um, I guess it's more of a report than I do intend to, uh, formalize that, um, extension of the permit. Uh, I don't have any issue with myself, but obviously it's, it's beneficial either because I get to consult the board and see if they have any questions or concerns. Um, Lou did in his perm, I did talk with him yesterday, um, about, um, some of the different things, but, you know, uh, particularly the, uh, this particular project, and he did note that, um, that, uh, as noted in the bottom of his letter, that they are planning on still proceeding later this year. Um, they just want to make sure that, uh, given that the deadline, uh, is approaching and the decision, that that's extended a little further, so unless board members, uh, have a reason to sort of revisit the entire permitting process for that project, uh, I think we did end up with a reasonably decent, uh, you know, site layout and all that maybe worked out there, so, uh, my recommendation, uh, would be to just, uh, grant the, uh, extension, but, um, I have obviously been talking a little about, um, the timeframe of the permit, and there are, um, good things that could come to the city from that, housing units, uh, renovation, and, you know, uh, revitalization of, of an area of the city, um, and then other things like something as housing inventory, uh, qualifications, so, uh, so I don't know if you have any questions or concerns about it, but we have relatively straightforward.
Yeah, no, no issue with the extension at all, I'm just curious where they are relative to final drawings and, uh, uh, are they finished with contract documents and their?
Oh, and the, the construction, uh, we didn't get into that level of detail, I know that they prepared all that, and they're basically ready to go, as I understand it, although we didn't talk about the details of their package. As I understand it, that package is ready to go, uh, if they're really just closing the loop on the, the financing side. Um, and, um, you know, you and I had to talk about the, you know, he goes that, um, it's a little bit more difficult these days, and we've seen some of that in the pandemic, but he thinks that that's, uh, still something they can proceed with. I would note that we also talked about, um, in light of the other discussion item we have later on, um, the MBTA Community Story Avenue, um, stuff, which will be discussed next week with the, or two weeks from now, I guess, with the, uh, city council, um, which you've been invited to, well, I think I sent an email to you about that. Um, he did bring up the issue of the affordable housing percentage, which I think I had mentioned at the planning board previously, um, but I have been discussing with the mayor and the counselors, uh, about, uh, this will be a, a highlight, I think, of the policy decision involved, because, um, the 40R district was set up with a 25% department, and, um, Lou has noted, and it's, it's, uh, not, not unsurprising, that with the newer guidelines from the state under MBTA communities legislation, the, um, the Housing Act that was done a couple years ago, um, we are actually capped out under that program at 10%, we can only require 10%, and we can, um, as I described it, argue with the state, basically come back to the state and make a, a case with a financial analysis, why we think it's feasible to go higher than that, uh, but we are not able to go higher than 20% in, under that program. So, um, part of our exercise, part of our decision-making process, we can, you know, uh, modify maps and so forth, but we're going to have to make some, some policy decisions, uh, we can, you know, satisfy the state here and, and make things contextually appropriate reasonably for Newburyport, but we have to make some decisions about where we're going to draw the line, and one of those is the affordable housing percentage, and, uh, he had noted that just the disparity, so to speak, between this project and And he had noted that just the disparity, so to speak, between this project that had been, you know, approved and has that comeback requirement and now having potential for, you know, zoning or projects elsewhere and possibly others, you know, similar time range, depending where they go, where there's, you know, a project where there's only 10% required. And that's a very big difference, I guess, for developers to carry that. So due respect in the particulars, I'm definitely a supporter of affordable housing. I think we should cut it as high as we can and count units on the subsidized housing inventory. But he didn't, he didn't note that in the context of, that that's a little bit of a difficulty here. I, again, as I've said before, I think one of the strong benefits we've got in the 40-yard district is that we get 25% of the units that are affordable, not just 20, not just 10, you know, 15 or 10. But also, we've actually gotten credit, although they're not technically affordable units, we've gotten credit for 75% of those units on the SHI and subsidized housing inventory, which has put us in that safe harbor status. And in effect, as we go forward, you know, march going forward, you know, with this MBTA legislation and the new zoning we're going to be doing in some areas of the city, if satisfied the state, you will not be able to do that same thing because the two statutes sort of conflict with each other in being able to reach a threshold that accounts under one program or another. So I defer to the chair if you want to add anything to this. Nope, it looks like you committed a lost connection. Rick might have lost connection, but we'll keep an eye on it. But just noting the fact that he does want to proceed. I actually, you know, I did ask that question because I figured after the first question people asked will be not so much a concern about giving, you know, a little bit longer to get going on the project, but more so that, you know, we don't want to see necessarily a long, you know, time before that happens. And he did indicate that he wants to proceed later this year, so.
And is he asking for a change in the percentage of affordability?
He, he brought it up as a concern relative to this project, where if the other two projects are basically built out and finished and, you know, most of our argu- prior, as it must be, completed. There wasn't a discussion about one or three Boston Way. But he did bring up the sort of disparity here and a concern about it. And we went through the mechanics of the fact that, you know, it isn't something where you can simply, you know, make the case under MBTA and to the planning board and the city council here, you know, and others, that we should just go back and revisit the permit and maybe lower the threshold. Did you have comps to the new expectation for developers, right? I pointed out that, you know, even if it was a policy level agreement to go back and do that on a project like this, which is something that the board, you know, really have a plan on, that it isn't just a planning board. I think that, you know, the ordinance itself is actually structured to require that at the outset. It's not a, there are waivers that the board can grant under the 40-yard district. It's somewhere I think that what we'd be looking at in the Story Avenue area, you have the ability to waive certain standards. But that allowance is specifically for things like design standards and, you know, site plan standards, things like that. It does not call out specifically the affordable housing percentage in there as being something the board can waive or reduce. So that's a baseline requirement, the ordinance. I say that in the variance, and I'm not sure that the board, you know, absent something from the city council, it seems like it'd be quite a deviation to try, you know, get that right. So it seems pretty clear to me that not only would the planning board have to revisit something like that, but also the city council. And so I pointed out the fact that there was some concern about that. That in either case, it doesn't matter whether we're talking about our 40-yard district, we're talking about the Story Avenue area, or any combination of how we draw the zoning lines and other requirements, that there'll be discussion about this issue. But I suspect that where we're going to be is that we're not necessarily going to lose ground in the existing 40-yard district. And so some might see that as retroactive, you know, to what a product is already been approved, you know, in concept. So putting aside for a moment the state, I reached out to them to have a little more detailed discussion about the so-called grandfathering of our 40-yard district, which is a, we're competitive here about the fact that this district was adopted previously. And then we can essentially grandfather the provisions in our district. However, that's according to guidelines from the state. The state could technically modify those guidelines, though I'm not sure they would at this point. They've sort of finalized them, but they did make a couple of changes before they issued the final version. So they could modify them further, but the way they're written right now, it's not 100% clarity as to whether or not they would. Since we have, we would be modifying, so they may need to take the boundaries. Possibly removing one provision that deals with the bedroom side of things, which is something they don't want to see, you know, the housing legislation, they want the patient and that kind of stuff. At any rate, then we, I want to make sure that we're able to maintain that ground essentially with the 25%. It says that we can maintain that even when expanding or modifying in the 40-yard district. But it's not 100% clear whether or not, we still need to argue with them through an economic feasibility analysis or do that. And so I reached out to them for a little bit more detailed discussion. I see Rick is back with us. Sorry, Rick, you missed a little bit of my summary, but I think you probably know most of what I spoke about, which is the affordable housing percentage. I was just noting Alden had asked whether or not, Lu Kuchi had asked about making a reduction in association with the outstanding or not completed debt project in 166 Route One, Hail's site. And I said, you know, we did talk about that. But I also, I noted the fact that it's not just the planning board, the city council will be involved and we're going to be getting that very discussion the coming months about where we draw the line in different areas. And generally speaking, I imagine we're going to want to keep, you know, previously established territory and not necessarily change that. So that'll be a discussion and we can certainly modify or reduce some of the regulations, so to speak. But it's a dear discussion and, and there might be a very big difference between the old state policy and the new one here. It's a, it's a, you know, flipping it a little bit.
Good question, Andy. So to recap, is it, am I correct in understanding that independent of the MBTA, new, the new zoning related to MBTA and the 40-yard zoning, if he were to downgrade his affordability from 25% to 10%, the pathway for him is not just a modification of his permits, it's new permits or a new variance?
He would effectively, this, aside from anything else we do with MBTA communities, right, going through that program.
Yeah.
The city council would have to go back to amend the ordinance, bring it down to 20, or allow the planning board to reduce or waive that, which is not currently over in there. And then he would have to come back to the board and modify it. So it's both city council and then planning board.
It's pretty extreme.
Yes, and I think that the whole, you know, spectrum of discussion about, and they, I alluded to all of you and later, you know, councilors and others about the whole affordable housing thing. You know, I have concerns about the fact that we don't have the local control anymore to try to, you know, aim high with that, so to speak. And that, you know, when we get developers saying we can't make it feasible, I think there's a debate about whether or not that's going in the private market versus being passed on to the other housing units, electric units, I agree that happens. But I think as opposed to saying that developer as well, we can see that you can only do 10%. We have to keep in mind that every time we reduce something like that, the expectation that, that we're talking about only at best that 10% of the year is being affordable. And okay, that, that's only 8, for someone who's making 80% of the area, maybe they can, right? So every time we reduce a threshold like that, we can get there in different ways. And I acknowledge that, you know, some of these pieces of legislation and the way we do things are not necessarily the best tools. But working with tools that you have, it's disappointing to me that we don't have that control locally, that they've sort of taken that away as part of their guidelines here. My hope is that we can maintain some of that and then we'll have a fair discussion about, you know, whether or not you want to go lower. And I definitely would see other communities aiming at different locations, whether it's staying at 10%, not levying it, doing the fiscal analysis as some of we're doing, and what we're doing as well. And maybe they're landing at 15 and they're stopping there. But there's a very big difference, not, I realize it's a small difference between 5% of units, right, and a 100-unit project like the Kelly's project approved by 96 or 98, I think. Let's say it's 100 units, you know, 5% or 5, 5 units is not significant overall, you know, just, I mean, it makes a difference, but it's not significant overall. But as a policy, I also have to consider the safe harbor status. And that, I think, if you're talking to the city council, perhaps even more so than the planning board, if I'd be thinking more about, you know, designs, like the context, you know, permitting, things like that, city council has to think about, not just the point, not that the planning board doesn't, but they're going to have to think about that, that policy level question as well to take a hit on the subsidized housing inventory of 7, 75 units coming off, brings us that much further away from a safe harbor status. So I have to be cognizant that we, that's something that I think is unfortunate that we don't, that that's something that's also potentially lost there. It's a convoluted set of state statutes. I wouldn't necessarily argue for every provision or structure that's in there on any one of these statutes, you know. But there's a complicated set of, you know, 40R, 4A, 4B. But, but in the context here, we're going to have to make some decisions. And one of the will be, should we want to apply or reduce any of the existing 40R? Should we try to expand or work out with that? State allow us to, to keep some territory? And where do we have something that's only between 10% and 20% to satisfy the state, you know, in that room there?
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah.
Go ahead. So with the MBTA communities and their lower affordability threshold, you said that the 40-yard can be grandfathered. Is that automatic or does this, we have to take action to get it?
Great question. So the way the guidelines are written, we have to submit formally, you know, our applicant or proposal, what we want to do. And it definitely ain't the guidance of, the legislature gave a pretty broad latitude, I would say. There are some basic provisions called out by the state legislature, but the, a lot of latitude is then left to the Department of, what used to be the Department of Housing and Community Development, and is now, I did this every time, that named the Executive Office of Housing and Living Communities, give a lot of latitude to them. It's an unusual situation, I would say, in Massachusetts because we're so whole rule-based that, but, but given the housing crisis and the timing, you know, and the economy and everything, that was, you know, so dinner, including this bill. And it basically gives a latitude to the state agency to determine what's a reasonable size district, you know, and so, I think some things like that. And in essence, and one of them that we're getting down to here is the extent to which some of these things can be sort of, you know, where you can get credit, they had guidelines previously that required greater density and they had sort of requirements, they reduced that based on some feedback from communities. We, you know, we gave feedback about some things, other communities, a lot of them gave feedback about, well, what if you're at the town line like this, you know, should you be required as a community to do the entire radius within your community? When in fact, you only have half a radius, you know, that, anyway, so things like that, they made some modifications, but, but they have a lot of latitude. So we, they, it says that they can do so, but we do have to submit and propose that. And that's one of the reasons why, because it doesn't say definitively when you, you know, it says the state, it says the department can approve, you know, one that's under a 40-yard that's grandfathered. They can, they can count that area, you know, as being satisfying. However, there's a presumption there that if there's anything that's sort of complex that we try to resolve, revise or resolve that. But it does allow us to keep that percentage, provided they're not having an extended argument with us over the economic feasibility. It's not 100% clear the way the guidelines are written, whether or not in order to maintain the 40-yard district, we also have to submit a formal analysis that says that's feasible. The way the guidelines are written, I would read them more generously, as, you know, it should be, in my view, read that way. But it should be read, I think, that we can keep the existing territory without doing the fiscal impact or economic feasibility analysis for the existing 40-yard district. For a new district in Story Avenue, totally new district, the way it's written, the guidelines are written, that should be something, I understand why they want economic feasibility analysis. And I think that's defensive on their regulations to say that that's required. I think the way that the guidelines are written, it should be interpreted, you know, in my view, very clearly that they can keep that, we can keep that territory, we should be able to present that to the state, they should be able to accept that. Unless we're talking about expanding the boundaries of the district, that we should be able to basically count this entire area of the district here, which is, I think, that one for us, right? And then to focus on, I think, Rick had pointed out previously, there are different areas around this, including going up with one and whatnot, that we might want to include as part of this. But given that we don't have to have the entire boundaries of the area right next to the train station, that's one of the other provisions here that we can, we have like seven, eight acres we have to keep over here, but there's 35 acres total, which we have to have somewhere in the city, that we have the option to put some of that over at Story Avenue. When I actually think that even if you want to modify that area, you know, improve it in some way, it's exactly that official thing to kind of do both at the same time. I think it's right for it, and, you know, but the housing percentage, I think, is, in my view, the biggest policy, you know, putting aside public design and land, it's the biggest policy I think there's going on there that, has a good end to it. It's going to supposedly streamline permitting. I don't have an issue with the out-of-the-way permitting as the 40-yard district does, but it has standards for easy, you know, design, construction, site design. But what I do question is just the, sort of taking away around against the ability to keep what we're already doing, saying, all right, provide the argument that it's not feasible to do anymore, as opposed to saying, you know, status quo, if developers don't like it, there's some provision where they can come back and argue, you know, on their end. It, it, I think that'd be more inappropriate to say. So, I was going to give you a lot more background, but I plan on speaking, you know, giving a presentation in more detail to the city council next, I'm sorry, on the 20th. And that's the next city council planning and development committee meeting. So I would invite, if you're able to come to that, we'll obviously be having at each of our, I'll refer to Rick, but I think we're going to be at each of our meetings, if not, you know, we have a special meeting, right? We're going to be having a lot more discussion about this. But in addition to where, where you think things should be or should not be, where height should be allowed, what park requirement should be, and design guidelines, again, I would encourage you to look at the existing 40-yard district so we can get your feedback on those type of provisions, anything to change, anything you would like to keep or not, where you'd like to see height or not see height, you know, things like that going in here. That would be helpful to have your feedback. But I would encourage you to come because having an interim conversation together is sometimes more efficient. We can get feedback from each other, we can learn from each other. And, you know, whether houses get more benefited from the design background or background that, that board members have here, that can all form an overall discussion and sort of move it along in one way, shape and form. But reaching consensus of zoning is sometimes difficult, but so we'll, we'll pick up that discussion. Rick, did you want to?
Well, just a couple of things. So have we, was this item C on the agenda then? We moved from A to C?
Uh, yeah, apologies.
So I just wanted, I wanted to ask.
A little bit more context on A, the request for extension, which, and so unless there's any questions about that, I don't know if there's, does that make sense of where we're at? Okay. And then C, I guess I just sort of rolled in a little bit too much. We probably covered that most background, but if you want to do that, you want to go back to the minutes.
Let's go back to the minutes and maybe we can wrap up C quickly. So the item under approval of minutes of the January 17th meeting, Beth and I were both absent, so we'll have to abstain. Is, could I have a motion and are there any, any changes to the minutes?
I'll move to accept the, approve the minutes of the January 17th meeting. Second.
Any, any discussion or changes or ready to move to a vote?
No.
Okay, so I'll call the roll, Alden.
Yes.
Beth will abstain. Bob?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
And I abstain. Okay, minutes are passed. Okay, back into Story Avenue MBTA Business Park Housekeeping. Andy, I, I, can you give us an update on, on where we are with consulting? And also, I think at one point you had talked about getting together a subcommittee to look at, or some, some type of ad hoc committee to start looking at this. Can you give us an update on all that?
Yeah, well, I defer to you on that piece. Say, the group, I actually, I wanted to earlier this week, reach out and try to scare somebody with the group. So I'll be doing that probably tomorrow. Yesterday, we had a discussion with the Department of Public Services about where we're pointing on the consulting end for the water. So we're building out analysis part of this. We are working with the regional planning agency on a couple of pieces, but one in particular is this economic feasibility analysis. We are, I'm finalizing scopes for a couple of contracts for, one has to do with the rendering, sort of providing some visuals for this. The other one is the, working out the text basis of the tweaks that we're going to be making to the zoning, basically working with the different inputs. So whether it's a markup from, you know, 20 different people, you know, a series of meetings that we're having and basically modifying that document and keeping it up to date as we go forward. We, I'll be coming back to you with some, some thoughts I have here about the, the boundaries of certain height allowances and things like that. Somewhat we have in the 40-yard district will be, you know, greater height was allowed near the train station. And I also should note, although it's not consultant services working directly for us, for more background, I won't go through with you. We happen to be in a working relationship with the Hubbard Kennedy School right now. They have a course that we're doing in the spring, and so there's like 40 students or so that ended up coming up here last Friday. The mayor and I went in on Wednesday, did a presentation with them, and then on Friday, they came in to do a tour, walking through the story avenue area, give some factual information. And they are looking at a couple of different things, we'll see what they produce. But they are looking at possibly giving us some of their own sort of visuals and whatnot. One of the things we talked about was trying to compare sort of a before and after kind of comparison, you know, if we were to take it, this is not our area, of course, but Rick was nice enough to share one of the books we have. We collect all these visuals, of course, as I'm sure, like, if Jamie knows, we design people, we keep all these, right? But this was just a good example of one of the books and just showing, whether it's a hand drawn or I actually, you know, like, maybe having sort of a free give, all of the work, but just showing before and after how the allowances for height and the mixture of uses and design guidelines and so forth to create that area. This was done similarly back when the 40, the 40-yard district was done years before I got here, when it was discussed as Little River Transit Village. And so one of those visuals that they might look at, the other one is the economic feasibility analysis. That's housing, you know, requirements and what's feasible for a developer. You know, it's been suggested they follow, you know, the state's, you know, structure for all that stuff. You know, it's been suggested they follow, you know, the state's, you know, structure for all that stuff, so that we kind of see. It might be independently result and the feedback we get from them, we're not going to use any of that. MBTC, obviously, we'll be working with them, and we're gonna see what they're doing at other communities on that same analysis. And, and they may also do a analysis of some of the fiscal impact on the community, so thinking about, you know. The financial impact of potential growth that might happen, right, new housing units and things like that. So a little bit more of an assessment of how many bedrooms might be expected at the end of the day, that kind of thing, so. School age children and whatnot. So we'll see what they produce, we're not in direct control, obviously, of that scope, so to speak, but we've given some suggestions of what we thought might be useful on our end. How they are doing, if they find it to be a very interesting project amongst a few others, I guess, they're looking at, they seem to have some strong interest in this. So that's kind of a quick synopsis of that, there's a couple of different irons in the fire, sort of pulling information together, different pieces of this, but. We're gonna get it, start getting into the nitty gritty, particularly next, to be on the twentieth. With the council, which hopefully some of you can attend, we're gonna start discussing, you know, the pros and cons of different pieces of this. I, I, I've had, at least one councillor, you know, expressed concern about the sort of state mandate piece of this, that's obviously, you know, controversial depending on depending on how you look at it. But as, as far as I'm concerned, unless the state were to change any sort of guidelines, we're obligated to complete something here, so. We do have to march forward with something that will comply, we may not agree with, you know, the, the policy overall, that sort of thing, but. I'm on this or that, but I think that this overall process, I think, can be beneficial, particularly for the Story Avenue area. Where we've already tried to make a lot of these changes, I think, around the train station with our forty yard district. I actually see some of this more substantial benefit coming in the Story Avenue area, and whether or not we use all or part of that area, you know, to qualify for MBTA. I think things sort of work in hand in hand as they look at.
Great.
Okay, that, you know, that was one question I had, it's other, we had, we, we were working towards that, including that as part of the MBTA.
Story Avenue?
The Story Avenue.
Yeah, it, it, it is a bit iterative, because, a part of the reason I think it's beneficial is, we already planned, I think, you know, again, this sort of going on, this vision, and you know, the idea that we want to do this, but. We already want to change the area to allow housing, or, you know, make it more of a mixed use kind of area, walkable, a little bit more of a village zone, so to speak, as opposed to just a strip mall anywhere, and it doesn't really represent Newbury Court, it didn't come in. So it could be that sort of third node within the city, sort of triangle, these two, about three, four areas, and then we have, of course, the National Register of Story District here, which we can. Direct some new growth and interest in those areas and help with some of the character, which is obviously a routine issue in Newbury Court, so. Get some of those other areas by sort of overcoming some of those pressures for your housing units and whatnot. But I think there's benefit in us, in addition to what Rick had suggested, which is looking, we have other ways to, again, for lack of a better word, germinate or add it to the map, just satisfy the state. I use that term mainly because, well, we have to satisfy the state, we also want to make sure it makes sense and context here, so. Well, we might want to run the district up with one, and, and that's good to change things, or just take credit for areas that are already developed, for instance. You know, and Rick had pointed that out, I think, a couple of meetings ago on a president aside he did. We also may want to take credit for what we're doing over at Story Avenue, and that's partly an interim kind of process. For instance, we could take credit potentially over at Story Avenue, or take credit, you know, up with one, and maybe the council feels more comfortable with a piece over Story Avenue, and feels less comfortable with one piece. We may recommend it with one piece, but it, it's a little bit of an interim discussion. Some of it won't be, you know, have a significant bearing on X, Y, or Z, some of it will, and it's, there are. I guess I would say that there's enough parameters going on, so to speak, then we'll have to kind of discuss what people are comfortable with, and then we can basically clarify that accordingly, and I think it's pretty. To my view, as well, it's a bit straightforward amongst the options we have to get to a result that satisfies the state and is appropriate for Newbury Court. But walk aside where we want to take credit especially, and, you know, if there's any desire to kind of reduce thresholds down to the ten percent, or, you know, like about fifteen percent or twenty percent or something like that versus the twenty five in the forty yard district.
Right, can I, can I just go back to, just a little bit of a baseline setting? Because I think I'm more familiar with the MBTA stuff that was originally put out. And, but then, given, given that there was some discussion between the towns, cities and towns, and back to the MBTA and the state, where we, where you were talking about, we only have a half of the radius. And so what, what, what things did change? Did that change?
Like, this is one thing.
You know, gave us, we were wired?
Yeah, one thing is they did, you know, the town line issue that was coming up, right? There were, there were some other adjustments they made, and one notable is giving a little bit more flexibility for other areas. That are not, you know, like everybody being as concentrated around the train station or.
Right, the percentage that had to be within.
The percentage of the radius, right, they still want it to be in a logical location, like they, you know, Story Avenue makes sense with trans, with the transit, essentially, we have a regional bus service that goes through there, the CNJ bus parking lots a little bit, you know. I debate that right now, I think it's a cultural, it's a full form right now, but that seems like a logical location, they might question, you know, other locations. The forty yard program looks for that kind of stuff, and I think the MBTA program, right, a little bit of the same kind of stuff. But we first stopped with the train station, we just happened to be a bit, a little bit ahead of the curve by, you know, having the forty yard district essentially being somewhat in line with what they're looking for here. Having done it, you know, through a different statutory program previously.
Okay, so I thought the number was like the twelve hundred or so units, did that change? Because I thought in the email that you sent, I still saw that twelve hundred fifty.
Yeah, and I apologize, I don't recall time, I had the original guidance, you know, for that component, but I think that, if I'm not mistaken, I'd do a number by the state around the same. But twelve, it might, I think it was a slight adjustment, like a very small, like, so again, anyway, twelve hundred ninety-two is the current number of units, and if you were to take the entire certain area that we're getting credit for. And that's the number of units they want to see us produce or allow, it's actually not, they say, we don't have to produce, and they say, I don't think you have the ability to do this. But we know when we zone something, obviously, we have some people who have permits, so twelve hundred ninety-two units, there are different overlapping provisions, so. You have to satisfy each of the individual provisions, but you can do it in different ways, so. We could have the minimum thirty-five acres, or we could, and, and sort of densely, you know, put all that density in there, or we could have a larger district and spread out the density a little bit. But there's also the floor that they put, oh, fifteen unit per acre. So one of the things that, that I put in the memo and talk a little more is just the forty yard district is about forty units per acre as a density. And so if you look at a certain comparison, you know, we could have a smaller district, and then a part of the fall, which is a couple wide of an area do we want to affect? You know, versus, do we want to have greater density like this? So again, I think we try to get as much mileage as possible out of the forty yard district. And then work out of that, mainly not so much because we wouldn't want to do similar changes elsewhere, but more because it allows us greater freedom to control what's happening there, whether it's the four miles percentage, or it's design guidelines, or permitting process, or whatever. So feel free to get other questions.
Just, just another, another question concerning the Story Avenue area is the, is what we're working towards creating a new, a new ordinance that would cover, cover that? Similar to the smart growth one, has all the various conditions and so forth, and is that?
That's why I pointed the forty yard, there are a million different variations of this, Rick, I know I spent years, you know, looking at all kinds of variations, as I have. There's a million different ways to do it, but in essence, they're looking for a similar structure, which is, particularly for Motley Family, they're looking for ad the right, right? Which is like our forty yard district, that was the, that was, that was the same thing the state wanted to streamline there, was ad the right, you know, housing. But they wanted to understand what will come next and allow some latitude for design standards, to make sure it kind of came out reasonably decent, right, both the site and the building. We, we proposed the time, design guideline, both for the building and the site, we're looking to maybe update, improve those, like talking local streets, and we're talking local streets in the group. We would like to think about, you know, we expand the bicycle park here requirements, you know, if you look for more, you know, cover for those, we have more EV charging stations that are either ready to go, or, you know, have power in front of them. They're more, they're more progressive or updated design guidelines that basically I want to incorporate in there, so. From the spectrum of all the things that you've seen and all the things that we've seen. You know, the only, the reason I point to that district is it's a similar structure what they want, and I think it makes sense to kind of bottle up something you're all aware of as a board, if you're, you've had changes in continuity. At the board, you've permitted a similar type of way, and so that makes a lot of sense to use that framework. But I think we have to decide in context where, here in the district, we allow height and density, just like we did in our forty yard district, we allow greater density around the train station. And then it tapers off outside of that, and then further, so as you get to State Street, because we wanted to recognize the residential label, you gotta, you know, downscale a bit. So there are basically three sub areas, if you will, in terms of height allowances, for instance, we're gonna want to do a similar kind of discussion for the Story Avenue area. And we have this question mark about the state land, whether that ever gets, you know, comes along, but I think we want to consider zoning that would make sense of that, should that ever, you know, be mobilized. And we've loaded that with the state, and see, we're gonna, you know, see where that goes. They have expressed an interest in using, if something is seen surplus by the state or partially surplus or can be multiple purposes. The state is asked to, you know, work with us on trying to create housing using state land, so. I'm not suggesting we take it right away, the park and ride component, I actually think that's a good thing to have here, but I think it's a question of whether or not we can do multiple things, I guess, you know, with that parcel as well, so. Again, it's, we just want to look at that, I think, my primary focus in the near term is that this, something like this would happen, and as we all know, the Kmart site is vacant, and there's interest in housing there. We happen to have heard from a may go about a project here, there are also interest in coming forward, so we might actually even come here, see something there, you know, coming forward, so these, you know, things, based on this discussion, but. Those might be early, and then other areas might be, you know, in the future.
I was, the other thing I was curious about this, we've talked about the whole Story Ave area, the shopping, the big shopping is sort of being overparked, as far as there's more parking spaces and stuff. But in, given the current zoning, is there really a surplus, given the square footage of the commercial zones there, are they providing more parking than what's actually required in the current zone?
Uh, yeah, I'm sorry, I haven't actually, I didn't run an analysis based on, I don't recall the time I had where they followed that, but I definitely can see that there's a sea of extra parking that isn't necessarily used.
Right.
And I think the main, main thing is irrespective of where they are with current parking, I can go back and we can check that, a lot of this stuff was permitted a long time ago. And it was a carryover of like subdivisions, things kind of freezing, you know, standards and whatnot, so. Anyway, the long story short is I think it matters a little bit less as to whether or not there are any access, or they probably are, perhaps, I think here. But, but the sub result is, it's more about, do we allow shared parking to reduce our ratios? You know, if you want them to hide the parking behind the building, if we want to, you know, try to put it underground or in a deck, you know, hide it somehow. In the case of the Kmart, what we discussed is that they would try to hide it under the building, essentially, so as much of that parking would be uncollected under the building. But again, that's, that's part of the discussion, I think, is do we reduce parking, maybe do we try to hide it aesthetically?
Right, because it just seems with the existing zoning and with the density that you're, that we're looking at for the MBTA, that's, that would require a fair amount of parking.
Well, that, that's true, but I also would argue that there's a fair amount of parking that could be shared, that parking that's not utilized, that night there for the shopping can be used for residences, right? So it's, we can debate when things are happening, but it's a chicken or egg thing, but if we never change our zoning, we never have shared parking, we're always gonna have excess parking, we're gonna create neighbors that don't make any sense.
So that's one of the things we're considering, is whether to reduce that ratio of parking.
Either ratios or essentially, you know, recognition in one way, shape and form, there's definitely ways to do it, but recognizing the, the share, you know, allowing, you know, for parking, that you don't necessarily need. You know, spaces for every individual uses if they're operating, that will pay anything if they aren't, right? And I think that's something that I think would be beneficial here, in addition to getting buildings up against the streets, Dave, putting parking behind, you know, and not having the sea of parking being the main thing that people see. I don't think there's any other question about, yeah. Dever, you, Rick?
No, I was just asking whether anybody else had any questions, I can't, can't tell from here.
I, I wasn't sure, I did put in a note in email, by the way, in case we haven't had enough, I remember showing up at the meeting on the twentieth, we happened to think we're gonna hit the threshold, in which, that's what we mentioned, and it was. We happened to think we're gonna hit the threshold, and we have a form of the planning board, I'd want to just add, if I was saying, just to show that, you know, for the meeting, but that's a. Not my significant concern, is to note that I don't know whether, you know, how many of you, you know, now, maybe thinking about it, or will show up, so. If that's an issue, we can, we can press it on the calendar, but otherwise, hopefully, a few will be there to discuss that.
So what's, what is concerned with that, as far as the number?
Oh, just that if we have a quorum of the planning board. Even in the meeting, if you're meeting, you know, I think it would just better practice to basically post it, even though, like, you know, we never, we didn't ever know definitively, but, but if a board is gonna show up in this quorum, it's good to post it, just so people don't brag about, you know, that sort of thing, so. Not that I necessarily think this is the instance, which someone would complain about that. Though that I necessarily expect all of you to show up to that discussion there, but I'm trying to get, you know, these simultaneous discussions and feedback, so. Particularly given that the council has to decide on zoning, and, you know, what they feel comfortable with, what they want, and what they don't, same thing with you, what we feel comfortable with, like change or add. You know, use, looking at the forty yard, the, the framework. You know, are there any, you know, projects elsewhere you'd like to see this or that, you wonder if the guy liked it, put in there, you've seen a guy done somewhere else, we think we should insert that provision, you know. That's the kind of stuff that we're looking for here, and so we can kind of integrate that in the old wall framework, but. I think, ultimately speaking, the way I do it is, we're looking to do a similar thing at the forty yard district. Here, I'd say there's a lot more commercial than, you know, perhaps, you know, I think we'd want to maintain the overall fortune though, maybe. At least, but, but add the residential and change the landscape would be something that's more of a filler, to do, you know.
Andy, the, last year, the council was unable to look at our short-term rental zoning because of the budget. I think one of the things to really impress on them on the twentieth is that they don't have that option this year, they really have to be able to hold public hearings on zoning and. Get through the zoning by the time that your grant deadline comes around. So that's important, important thing to let them know early.
Yes, thank you, it's a very good point, I, I have been talking with councillors, and I, I will be working closely with both the council president and the committee chair, planning and development committee chair. On that very point, to try to make sure that that's carried through for a point of continuity, I think, you know, you're right, that. The council tends to do in the spring timeframe, become very consumed with the budget cycle. It doesn't necessarily need to push everything outside, right, there, there is the ability to have a good meeting, so. Well, we might see a little bit more of a gap with their attention as their focus is funded. I think we try to get as much feedback as we can early and maintain, like Rick said, through that, it has to be done. About because we need to reach a finish line with something we all have consensus over at the end of the day, and all those discussions do take time, and. We just, we, we can prepare something responsive for that, but we have to have that consensus to feedback from councillors, that's one reason why. You know, it asks it not to be just the three members of the eleven upper city council, the planning and development committee, but actually pose a committee as a whole. So that all councillors can attend, they've asked all councillors to attend, they don't know that they all will. But in these discussions, we try to get feedback from every councillor, whether or not they're, you know, initially engaged, you know, on their own, we can reach out, but. Trying to get as much feedback as possible, so we don't have, you know, last minute concern, they could have been raised, oh, I like this, right, or like that, you know. We can't satisfy everybody simultaneously, of course, but, but the earlier we have the feedback, easier is to satisfy folks, and. We do need to make sure, now having a, you know, newly, as well as a legally established council, we have to make sure that the new composition of the council fully understands this piece of new legislation, what is required here. We know generically, you know, I can say, you know what needs to be done, but we have to make the policy choices involved that go along with the map, and, and some of the other things, like the housing percentage of those guidelines and the debt. But we'll need to feedback from councillors on that, before we can prepare a package that is ready to send to the state, and then sponsor for the city council. We're not gonna go with the whole route until we know we have something that's reasonably well, you know, well made, so.
Anything else on the, this zoning discussion?
Uh, no, the only thing, maybe more of it, just as an overview, Rick, and in context for the rest of you. Rick, if you happen to be available, I think you're pretty familiar with the discussion with the regional planning agency, and we can see about our scope with them, if I'm not mistaken. If not, I can make sure that Ian can guide you into that, we have a Zoom, I think, a week or so from now, maybe.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear when this was gonna happen?
I think it's the next week or so, I can double check on the count by calendar, but. I think that you're on that Zoom invite from Ian, if not, I'll just want to make sure you're added to that, and then I.
Okay, I'll, yeah.
We can, we can double check, but I just wanted to flag that. The other thing was, the, did you want to speak to the other updates from planning director, because there's one there I was gonna mention?
Well, I, I had two questions, actually.
Sure.
First one was, you know, I understand that the discussion didn't get very far last night on the global rezoning, and. I'm wondering, you know, what the updated timeline is and where this is going.
Yeah, let me know if you want more detail, although there's a lot of different pieces to this one too, actually relatively small piece of property, but a lot of different things that have gone into the discussion thus far, so I'm completely not covering the entire landscape here. So right now, there are a couple of, there's like a tripartite arrangement basically between the landlord, Global, a local development team, which I'll say is Rossi, the, the person interested by. Have the purchase and sale agreement, we're not part of that, right, the separate agreement, but we have a development agreement with them, we're kind of set a minimum box around the, what could happen to that site. That was basically a minimum standard we looked before, any of us felt comfortable talking about, you know, zoning change, which have brought up to make residential feasible. So without going over all the background you previously heard from the hearing back in November. The council has to take its action by, by, because of the ninety day requirement under forty A. When the hearing closes, there's ninety days within the act, and all this got carried over from last year. There was a request for us to see if we could get from Global a commitment on a deed restriction to make it clear that we're not gonna be any commercial uses there again. Only residential, and we. Um, only residential and, uh, we were able to secure that and repay that basically a day or two ago. Uh, but it took a long time to get that resolved, unfortunately, there are a number of attorneys involved. And even though a quiet view was relatively simple, the lack of agreement, it took a long time to get that sorted out. So, um, that clock is now tight as opposed to having more window where we're trying to get wrapped up, end of last year or even right after the new year, it didn't pan out. So, um, uh, not through any shortage of effort. So, um, so that is now poised to come out of committee from last night's meeting. All three members of the committee voted to recommend the adoption of the as amended version you discussed on November fifteenth. Um, of last year, um, to, um, I have worked hard with the council president, the committee chair and the, um, the clerk's office. Try to ensure that the upcoming council packet includes everything that's relevant, uh, you know, so they have that. Um, yeah, and, and I say that mainly because the planning board's report that came out in December of last year. Um, didn't make it into the council's packet in December, so they didn't technically receive, receive that report. Um, and so, uh, even though they had, they had gotten it from it, it wasn't received in the, the docket. So I want to make sure there's no question, I have everything in front of. There are a bunch of different moving pieces to this, but, um, there's a development agreement, there's now an agreement to place the restriction pending the council adopt the zoning. The, the restriction gets it put in place, I, you know, no, nothing other than residential in the future, um, irrespective of whatever zoning laws. Um, and then, um, the, um, the council has to do two readings. Uh, this is an odd provision in my view in terms of efficiency, but, um, our own council regulations require a few votes on things, a number of different things. Um, um, and that may be beneficial in some ways, but I think it's a lot of ways inefficient. So, um, they effectively now, because of the crunch timeline, have to, um, um, but we're close loop with them. But they will have to vote on two readings to, uh, two readings as we call it, two votes. Uh, waive the rules, uh, on Monday night and this coming Monday night and do the vote for the zoning in one night rather than doing it in two nights. A first vote and then a second vote they would do on the twenty sixth, I think it is. Um, they do it again, uh, I'm not sure frankly that that provision accomplishes a whole lot, having seen over the years, just, you know, too many of the same subjects, but most time same results. Um, but that is something they'd have to do procedurally now to, to serve resolve that timeline. But I can mind you, everything is in place at this point. Um, I recognize that there are a few parties who do have some concerns about, you know, what might happen in detail on that site. But we have not really heard anybody who has said that they're uncomfortable with the, um, the overall, um, development scheme that's been proposed for the site. So, um, the four units, three in the main structure towards the street intersection and another little sort of accessory structure in the back, kind of car ride house style. Um, no one has really been saying that this is not a, a good plan or the plan they're coupled with. There's been a few details that people want modified, but not something that you would find typical being addressed before the Board of Appeals. In this case, the permitting board, if we have, you know, debate with board, but in this case it'll be the ZVA based on scope. So, um, in my view, I think we have a fair amount of control over what's gonna happen here at this point. I think we have a pretty good arrangement based on the idea of getting rid of the gas station, making it residential, cleaning up the intersection. Um, and I'm not particularly worried myself, we're gonna get a bad result there with the whole full control we have. Um, but there have been some concerns expressed that we haven't maybe gone far enough. To, uh, Rick's question, um, I think the, I was actually a part of what I was gonna ask, actually how that part was. Um, if, if, if you happen to be interested in coming to the council meeting on Monday, um, some arguments were made last night, uh, council needed it. And there were a few others who chided in, but there were some arguments made about things like, you know, is this spot zoning? Um, again, that's, I can tell you right now, it's not spot zoning. Um, two changes quarter, the other three quarters are the same zoning district, it used to be R three, there's a rationale for doing it, you know, et cetera. So, um, dispel the rumor that we sometimes hear people throw out arguments and not really know necessarily the case law relevance, you know, behind it. But, um, it's not spot zoning, um, there is, there was expressed a concern, I think the major reason why there might be some debate, uh, on this on Monday night. Um, again, in my view, it makes sense to do the zoning change. Um, there was mainly, um, in my view, some debate amongst councillors about the definition change. So the, the change here that made it god's necessary for this project included both the map change for the district to R three. Uh, because this district, even though it was originally incorporated in the High Street District, is actually not representative of the law of the type of watch that that district was intended to protect. So that was intended to protect the larger estate property from being subdivided and built out right to the character. These corner lots and some of them, this is one example, are way undersized, you can't even do a single home in, you know, under the district, the way it's set up. So, uh, it's not surprising that there are issues trying to get something to happen here. So while we mobilized getting global to do something and make it residential, we also are trying to get something to be feasible there so it can go ahead. And I think we've reached that, you know, reasonable good point here. We had somebody propose six units at one point and, and my response was, don't even come back, it's not gonna, you know, it's not gonna be an issue. They didn't come back and we have a project in four units, it's gonna be, I think, reasonably, you know, good for the area. Um, I think I would have been able to build that one, I put the six units in here. And, um, so that didn't do anything back, but, um, but I think we have a good plan here. Um, um, and I realize that there's still architectural evasions and, and discussions about grading and, you know, it's like what they're permitting. But all of that stuff, just like the planning board, if it's the ZVA or the planning board, both boards can review those things, which require X, Y, or Z. They can continue the hearing if they're unsatisfied, they can require peer review, um, and they're gonna have detailed evasions and whatnot, you know. You know, recently years, both boards have fully incorporated basically the expectation that there's clear R H elevation.
Is, is there any controversy over the change in definition of multifamily?
Yes, sorry, thank you. Um, yeah, that, uh, mainly the debate about that was this sort of unintended consequences argument, right? That we're, we're worried that the change in multifamily definition that allows someone to make two structures as opposed to one. Um, even though it's a discretionary special permit for the multifamily, it's not actually have the right, it's a, it's a special permit. Um, there's concern that it's gonna have a wide spread of effect elsewhere. And so without actually sitting down and doing a charade exercise, they're great, sorry, let's look at the R three district. Let's look at the other districts where this is allowed, let's look at how much is built out already. Uh, the way that I've tried to, one of that is, um, and Rick and I make is I know this was a concern he had raised and then we walked through a little bit was. Um, where could the, there be unintended consequences? We're not looking at this from the office's perspective, I'll say, we were not looking at the zoning change for this lock and isolation. Um, we saw them say that they thought it was necessary for this project, that's where the conversation originated here. But Jennifer, our zoning administrator, was telling us she had raised the concern before that, um, a couple of years ago, for instance, when the sixty amendment was, uh, was made. Um, and sixty had previously been used for different scopes of housing, but was reduced now to single two-family home projects. There's no ability to do two, two different structures or anything larger than that. So the way that I think that I characterized that and the, the way that I've responded to it to the council last night, for instance, was not to look at it as if, you know, this is all being done for one property or one developer. Just because it hasn't been raised by someone here in the concept of a project, but rather to think, you know, as we have looked at it. We see that, I see the benefits not for a developer here, not for a developer in any area of other given site. I actually look at it and I say, why would we want to preclude the planning board itself from looking at or being able to entertain a plan that breaks up the massing? So if someone's gonna book four units, why force them to go to either not allow it at all or get a variance to break up the massing? Rather than just allow the board to decide if they want to allow the breakup of the massing or not.
At a high level, I mean, it seems like that would be an improvement. Uh, to, to, to give that option, there, there are plenty of examples around town of two structures that have been artificially joined. Because they have to be to me, it's the zoning requirement that, that, uh, there's one on Lime Street, up the street, houses, very nice houses.
Yes.
And they have this funny odd little connection because they had to agree. And, and, you know, it, it's, to me, this is, this is an improvement that created that option. That with the scale of the community and the scale of buildings that we're talking about, uh, to, to give the option for multiple buildings, it seems like a significant.
And, and I don't necessarily care.
Then what would be a concern?
Yeah, no, and I, again, that, I, I think it, it could probably like a little bit more paranoia sort of about based on a bad experience with this product or that product. Or, you know, concerns were raised with this decision or that decision. Uh, again, I, I realize that people have debates about decisions they like or projects they didn't like. But I think, like, just like you, I look at this as a good thing because it allows us to break the massing. And it's not even allowed as a right, it's a discretionary, you get to decide as a board whether you're comfortable with it. So, um, yes, we're gonna talk about as a right housing and things in other areas inside of the state, but that's a different discussion. And you have control to decide what is with that, these, you know, at the beginning of that, uh, stuff. But that's a digital four yard district, that's different. This is a discretionary special permit for multifamily and you get to decide. So to me, there's, the upside is you get options, whereas before you're precluded as a void. And never mind the fact that they can't give you something on their end. And so, uh, this to me seems like we're at the finish line of something that was, you know, took a couple of years to get to this point. I, I don't, I hope that the, the, you know, finer grain details that people are concerned about here don't, you know, sandbag the whole thing. Because, well, I don't necessarily care about people's individual agreements that they have out there. Um, I think we've gotten to a pretty good place here and it would seem kind of silly to have to reset the clock for everybody, restart the whole process over again. It was, um, the odd thing, I think one thing, one odd thing was as suggested last night, uh, two things that came up was. Um, Council Z, I think it suggested, um, we might have an overlay district and there's a question about, you know, why didn't we consider an overlay district? That might be a better mechanism by which we address this. Um, I think that's perhaps an overly complicated, we have, no one was suggesting a different outcome. So we're basically talking about having, you know, redoing the process, creating a overlay district for one property or two properties. Um, and, and then basically getting to the same result, essentially one way or the other. The other, uh, idea that was thrown out in, in concept during that discussion mainly was, um, adding what in essence, and the part of this was around the context that we have to advertise another area. Is it a substantive change enough that the council can just make it through now or they have to come back to the planning board, do the whole thing over, which affects all the timelines that they agree to. You know, everybody trying to wrap things up. So, um, and again, not that we have to be sensitive to all that, but I think it's, you know, reasonable at this point where things are. Um, it was suggested, um, uh, and this is, it's something that, so we might find it confusing if you're trying to deal with reality is. Um, the idea of having a multifamily definition here, like we were talking about, it would be, um, one way as opposed, as you left it here, this, this adjusted version. Uh, in the R three district, so for this property and for the other R three is just around the downtown. One definition that's like we just talked about, but the other definition staying in place for every other area in the city. So we have two, as you look at the multifamily definition, say, can you do two different structures? You allow two different structures possibly in the R three or on the downtown, where most of this is already built out and developed with, with too tight anyway to have a second structure. Um, and then not other places, I, I, I don't, neither of myself as a zoning administrator thought that made sense, but that was also offered. Um, as a suggested, uh, from a comment, but that was offered as a suggested way to resolve this issue here of unintended consequences. I'm not convinced it's an unintended cost, but it's the concern here.
Correct, please, for bigger, larger buildings.
I just don't get it. I understand people's underlying concern, I just don't think that there, I think there's been a little bit too much anxiety about something that I think is pretty.
What are they concerned? I don't, I don't understand what concern they're, what is their concern?
Um, well, the, 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 what I heard, for instance, what I heard from Council Z last night was mainly that, um, if you codify something as an allowance. We sometimes hear from applicants or their attorneys that that is, um, that the council has basically determined that's something they like or they want. And therefore it should be allowed by the board, right? And, and the reality is that first of all, just because the council allows them the ordinance doesn't mean that the board has to allow it if it's a discretionary special permit, right? Just because it, it, uh, there's a very big difference between, um, saying something is as a right and there's no question whatsoever. This is a discretionary permit, you know? So irrespective, as long as one of the boards is looking at it, you know, and whether or not you, they complain of what you look at or the ZVA or both. Um, which can be, you know, onerous from a permitting perspective and not necessarily efficient, um, having two people, two boards overlap. Um, you know, it, it's a relatively small scale project, um, and, you know, you have that discretion. Um, the, there was, I would say in the background, I think part of it is a little bit of skepticism, sort of debate about, well, could we like the planning board review or could we like the ZVA review? And there was some debate maybe here, um, from some of the parties, whether, whether it might have been better to have the planning board look at it or have the planning board look at it too. Um, I, I agree that there's a certain places that the planning board definitely belongs, better as a permitting entity. I'm just not convinced this is actually need to be one of them because it's still relatively small scale residential, we know the overall composition. Um, it's not, you know, a dense or commercially or whatnot. So I'm not convinced that it needs to, we need to also toggle in this, which board is doing the permitting for it. Um, I, and the reason I say is because irrespective of whether it's the ZVA or the planning board, I can't imagine that either one of your boards would approve a project and bash guys as very visible intersection. So, um, in addition to all of the controls that are already in place to kind of minimize what could happen here down to this essentially. Um, and, and a whole bunch of description about the garden style and, you know, blah, 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 um, you know, with the patience, um, that is spelled out here, residential, residential only. You know, the, um. It, it's just, it seems like a thing made overly complicated, in my view, I think at this point we're at a good point and I think we should all be able to hopefully see that stuff coming, the gap they should come down this season. And, you know, homes starting to be built there.
So, Andy, getting back to the question about the timeline, so you, I think I heard you say that the, um, city council, the, the, the current game plan is for the city council to. Waive the rules and do first and second reading in the same time on Monday night, is that, is that what you said?
Uh, well, that is the, that is what's going to be brought out of committee and they'll have to decide if they want to do so on Monday. It was acknowledged that that was a time constraint that we were bumping up against and, um, and that their old rules essentially were requiring this extra vote that, you know, might create that conflict. Um, so, uh, yes, the typical protocol is the board, you know, the, the council can when it's brought out of committee. And the, uh, council president and committee chair, they are prepared for the, the process. I, um, will be confirmed that all councillors are aware, um, for our discussion that we had last night that, um, that it does require, um, the waiver of the rules and two votes in one night. Essentially counting as two votes in one, uh, rather than having, uh, the site second vote two weeks later, just to confirm the things that the area voted. Um, uh, in order to not have, uh, everybody's, have to restart the process. You would have to have another joint public hearing, even for us to get back to the exact same place we're at, never mind anything different, just to get back to the same spot we're in. Everybody involved would have to extend agreements, uh, presumably, you know, pay more time for this and that. But everybody have to extend agreements, um, and whatever range that they made, uh, and we'd have to redo the entire hearing process just to get back even just to this. So, you know, in my, it's just not warranted, so.
So, so a, a related question is, um, I, you had mentioned to me, I think that we might not need a meeting on the twenty first, is, is that still the case?
Uh, correct, we, uh, with the, as of right now, we don't have any, uh, I can check the day in the morning, but as far as we know right now, there's no reason to be meeting on the twenty first. Um, and we had no, and, um, and that was partly why we wanted to make sure we could take up the matter of the, uh, permitting section for, um, Mingo this evening, that was not an issue.
So, so I guess here's a, here's a thought and, um, just to throw out there. I wonder whether, um, we could consider having a, instead of, instead of meeting on the twenty first. Meet on the twenty eighth, have a meeting on the twenty eighth that would be, uh, that we would hold for a joint public hearing on this, just to get ahead of it. In case, you know, ju- just to be prepared, because I know you have a meeting, a notice requirement that you probably wouldn't be able to make a notice for, a meeting for the twenty first. But you might be able to make a, a public hearing twenty eighth. And I, I wonder if, if that would be something that we could consider, uh, moving ahead on and talking to the planning and development committee chair. Um, to see whether we could, just, just to move the process forward, because there's absolutely no reason. You know, if, if the council is unable to get the votes to, um, have two readings on Monday night, then we need to have a new public hearing, correct? So, so we could, the earliest we could do that would be the twenty eighth, probably.
Yeah, we, we could, we can, if you try to arrange for that, I, um, in some ways I'm hesitant only because I feel like that might, um, potentially sort of run, uh, in the opposite direction. In terms of the, the potential for things to be wrapped up on, on Monday. Um, first of all, there's sort of a, um, assumption here that the, the council's also on board that we need to do another hearing as we're advertising or going with something that it may not, you know, pan out. Uh, probably causing, um, some anxiety for the other parties involved, putting it aside for a second, just the, um, if, if we're not sure that the council is there. Um, that may change or have some impact on Monday's voting, potentially get the thought that there's, you know, more time to look at this or if it's sort of. I, I'm just sort of wondering whether that would be beneficial. I can put the stat story stuff and I, I would love to do the same thing and for that reason, but I'm hesitant, um, as secondary effects might not be beneficial.
Yep, okay. All right.
I can pick up, know with them if you want, just then, you know, the discussion, I think we're allowed to have discussion like that anyway, so, uh, if you want to, have to do that with me.
I, I didn't catch what you said, the last part of it.
I, I, I'm happy to have that discussion with anyway, just to consider, you know, uh, possible courses of action. I, I just not necessarily sure I would recommend it right now.
Yeah, I got it. So it would only be, it would only give us an extra week so we could do it, we could schedule it for the first meeting in March, if that were the case.
Right, right, yeah, I, so I, you know, again, if you're, if you're interested in seeing this happen, you know, feel free to, you know, reach out to the councillors or show up to the meeting on Monday and speak if you want. But, um, you know, uh, we'll see where the council goes and, and they just, they do call Monday.
Okay, um, that was all I had, thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you, that's it. I, I just wanted to note that if anybody wanted to, you know, get the update on that or speak to that. And then, like I, we talked about the EBITDA, your Story Avenue, um, stuff, um.
Yep. Okay. So, uh, nothing else?
Nope, thank you, Chair. Motion to adjourn, move to adjourn for a second.
Okay, so roll call, um, Alden.
Yes.
Beth.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yes.
Heather.
Yes.
And I vote yes, and we are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Night.
I'm so sorry. I, I've been.